Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the September 10th meeting of the Lincoln City Council. Let us all stand for our Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Obey Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The Order of Business of the City Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those in opposition. The applicant may make a short rebuttal statement. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether they are speaking in favor of or in opposition to an item. Testimony is limited to five minutes. After all public hearings, the City Council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to the adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. The clerk will now please call the first item of business.
Yes, and just a reminder, we do ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-up sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Once you have testified and council does not have any questions of you, you may return to your seat. Our first item of business are our consent agenda, items one through three.
Does anyone wish to testify on any of these items? Anyone from the staff like to comment? From the council? Hearing none?
All right, if not, we just have one item to vote on. It's item 1F. If someone would make a motion?
So moved.
Second?
A motion by Councilman Eskridge and a second by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird in discussion of item 1F, setting a hearing date. Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next, then, are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward and raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items 4A, as in Apple, through H, as in Henry. They are all applications of Mochara LLC, doing business as The Watering Hole for a Class C liquor license at 1321 and 1323 O Street, and the related manager application of Barbara Johnson. Application of The Watering Hole West for a Class C liquor license at 1550 South Cottington Avenue, Suite P. The Watering Hole East for a Class C liquor license at 8300 North Woods Drive, and the application of Cliffs Martini Lounge for a Class C liquor license at 5310 South 56th Street, Suite 1. These all have the same manager of Barbara Johnson.
Thank you. Before we move to the discussion and testimony on those items, I'd like to speak to the public. If you were here to talk about agenda items 1B or 1C, addressing the Porter Ridge issue, that was voted on in our consent agenda. No motion to override was made, so no action will be taken on that item. Thank you. And I assume you're Ms. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
What have you first said? Ms. Johnson, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Would you raise your right hand, Barbara? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Barbara Johnson, 6131 Fleetwood Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Ms. Johnson, welcome. Please tell us a little bit about your applications.
I'm the liquor manager and becoming the manager of the liquor license for those establishments.
Questions from the council? Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this item, in addition to Ms. Johnson? No? Thank you very much. So are we going to go to the next item?
Yep. If no one else wishes to testify, I'll call item 4I, manager application of Steve Stevenson for Playmakers at 640 West Prospector Court, Suite 100. Would you raise your right hand, Steve? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Steve Stevenson, 5700 West Orleans Court in Lincoln, Nebraska, 68524.
Good afternoon, welcome. Tell us a little bit about your application.
It's for Playmakers Bar and Grill, and I've been actually doing this job for a while now. So it's just to make it official, I guess.
Other questions from the council? Hearing none, would anyone in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Teresa, what's next?
Next is item 4J, manager application of Tiffany Jones for Whitehead Oil, doing business as Ustop Convenience Store Number 5 at 8231 O Street. Tiffany, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Tiffany Jones, 3636 North 52nd Street, Apartment 24.
Good afternoon, Ms. Jones. Thanks for coming. Tell us a little bit about your application. Why are you here today?
Just to apply for the manager liquor license at Ustop Number 5.
You currently work there?
Yes, I do.
And just transitioning into management?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Would anyone else in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? Ms. Jones, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Teresa, what do we have next?
Next is the manager application of Ashley Martin for Whitehead Oil for Convenience Store Number 15 at 7100 Pioneer's Boulevard. Raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Ashley Martin, 2002 South 14th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68502.
Hello, Ms. Martin. Thank you for coming. Tell us a little bit about your application.
I am applying for the liquor license for Ustop Number 15.
And like Ms. Jones before you, you currently work there? Is that fair to say?
Yes.
And this is just an upgrade?
Yes.
Are there other questions from the council? Anyone in the audience like to speak on this agenda item? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Martin. Teresa, how about 4L?
All right, that's the manager application of Lori Stanley for Whitehead Oil for Convenience Store Number 25 at 2140 K Street, Suite 100. Raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Lori Stanley. My address is 3601 North 70th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68507.
Hi, Ms. Stanley. Thanks for coming by. Your application. Anything's the others?
Yep. Got to get that name on the liquor license.
I understand. Are there questions from the council? Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, thank you, Ms. Stanley.
Thank you.
Teresa, would you please call 4M?
Yes, it's the manager application of Jennifer Hansen for Applebee's at 3730 Village Drive, 6100 O Street, Unit C 318, and 3951 North 27th Street. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Jennifer Hansen, 9000 South 32nd Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68516.
Welcome, Ms. Hansen.
Thank you.
Thank you for showing up. Tell us a little bit about your application.
I recently have been asked to be on our liquor license, our Director of Risk. Last time, I am the Director of People Resources, so I'll be taking over.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one coming forward? Thank you, Ms. Hansen.
Thank you.
And Teresa, we'll move to the next item?
Next is 4N, application of global warming for an SDL to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 150 feet by 75 feet at Wyukah Stables at 3600 O Street on October 5th from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Hi there.
No oath.
No swearing at us? Okay.
I do that other times.
I'm always a little weird on the transition there, too.
I know, everybody was. This is for Flatwater Shakespeare. They'll be doing some vignettes as part of their annual fundraiser. We will be doing the catering as well as the alcohol piece for this. They should be a... They're hoping to get 100 people there, so... But we're expecting somewhere between 75 and 100 folks.
Are there questions from the council? Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? Do you want a moment? No? We're good then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa, an item last?
Last is application of rail yard entertainment for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 356 feet by 230 feet at the rail yard at 350 Canopy Street, 601R Street on September 29th from noon to 8:00 p.m.
No, I don't think there's any swearing in this time.
No swearing in this time?
Yep, no swearing in.
Okay, so same type thing as last time. This time, we've gotten some recommendations from the ILC as some steps we needed to take in order to get the application a little bit shored up on our ends. We've met those things. We have all the tenants on board now, so there will be no issue with liquor from one establishment leading into the street and not being permitted to do so. Aside from that, all the other expectations have been met, and we feel like we have everything we need to execute one of these and execute them properly, given the timeframe that we were given that was suggested by the ILC.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Councilman Eskridge?
Yes. Everybody's on board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And see, the hours that you have are from 8... Or, excuse me, from noon to 8:00 p.m.
Yes, sir.
And I don't think they've set the game, but they say it's either going to be 2:30 or 3:00.
Yes, sir. So it'll be 2:30 or 3 o'clock start, so we'll have a little bit of time before as well as time after. We'll have to clear the street and get everything back in, and it'll essentially be a standard Saturday night at that point.
Okay. Extra security staff that you're bringing in?
Absolutely. Yep, so we'll have extra security. We'll obviously be working with Captain Flymeister on extra support from the city as well, you know, if we can get it, and then we'll have everything on our end taken care of through my security.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the council? Would anyone else in the audience like to testify on this item?
Good to see you, sir.
Jeff Flymeister, Chief of Police with Lincoln Police Department.
Welcome, Chief.
Good afternoon, and thanks for the opportunity to speak with you again today. So I just wanted to highlight a couple different things. One, I had an opportunity to come down to the rail yard this past weekend and interact with Brian and his staff and just make some observations. And I think it's important to note that when we've come in front of you before, we've talked a lot about resources and the strain on resources that we have, and the multitude of different details our officers are tasked with on game days. That continues to be one of our major concerns, is will we have the staffing to accommodate the propensity for an increase in the number of people that are concentrated in the rail yard? And we don't know yet today whether that kick is going to be at 14:30 or 2:30 or 3:00. Just subtract 12. Yep, just subtract 12. So a couple things that we, I think that we need to highlight. We did just a little bit of research, and some of this... There's a dichotomy in that. In this weekend, in the rail yard, there were 10 citations for minor in possession. Okay? A lot of that has to do because Brian's security staff interjects themselves into the rail yard itself. They identify minors. They bring those minors out to our two uniformed officers that are working off-duty there or the on-duty capacity when they can respond. So what does it show us? It shows us that there are minors that are consuming alcohol within the rail yard itself. How they are getting access is... There's a whole host of ways that they could be doing that. But it's something that we need to be... We need to reflect on. There were three minor attempt to purchase alcohols. Two, urinating in publics. One procuring alcohol from a minor. One liquor license violation that is being addressed. There were calls for service that took the resources of both on-duty and off-duty personnel, and not just for the Lincoln Police Department, in that we had two medical calls where the services of Lincoln Fire and Rescue were necessitated in the rail yard. Brian Hofer, at the request of us, reached out to the bridge. And if you know how the bridge data works, it's self-reported, right? So when someone comes into the bridge, there is a litany of questions that are asked of them. And one of those questions was, where did you consume the alcohol that brought you to us today? And to put that into perspective, there was 22 different individuals that indicated their last drink was at a bar. 12 of those came from the rail yard. Four of the 12 were minors. Now, some of those were accompanied with a citation, the MIPs that I talked about. Others were not. So there is some duplication there, and there is some independence. All of those things aside, I know that Brian and the security staff are trying to do the best that they can. When I was sitting there talking to Brian, I was making some observations on the lines. The lines... And they were long to try to get to the windows to be able to purchase a drink. We have the perception that if we expand this into Canopy Street, those lines will shorten, and the ability to consume more alcohol in a shorter period of time will be enhanced. All of those are for your contemplation. The single most important issue was and remains is, does Lincoln Police Department have adequate staffing to accommodate this request? And I can answer that for you.
Questions? Councilwoman Lamb, then Councilwoman Raybold?
Thank you.
I would just like to say that, like, we do work with the officers, and we did have our off-duty detail down there, but, you know, we also did have other officers that came down. So at one point, we had no less than five officers down there, you know, just patrolling, seeing, assisting. So, I mean, you know, we have our detail of two that are required for these types of game days without an SDL, but there are extra officers down there that aren't necessarily assigned to us. So, you know, if there was a way to... I don't know if there is a way to juggle, but that's just an observation from my end as well.
And that is a good observation, because we're going to deploy the resources where the most number of people and the propensity is. What we cannot control is when those officers' services are needed at some other location in immediate downtown Lincoln or at the far reaches of the rail yard itself. And although the geography that the center team officers and specifically the bike officers cover is pretty isolated in comparison to the other geographic teams, it's still, when you're talking about 27th and Holdridge down to the rail yard, especially when there's an influx of people and traffic, that's quite a bit of drive time and response time.
Councilwoman Lamb had a question, then Councilwoman Raybold, or we just remind you?
Thank you. Chief, I talked with some folks a little bit about the special events team that met, and were you part of that meeting?
I was not, but Tanya Peters, who is here and is legal counsel, was part of that.
Okay, maybe I need to talk with Tanya.
Peters, come forward.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Ms. Peters, would you come help us, please?
Tanya Peters, Assistant City Attorney.
Hi, Tanya.
Hi.
So you were part of that meeting, and my understanding is that we've been told there's going to be additional security. And I think that we heard last time that the security... I mean, I think there's a little confusion, that the security cannot or does not have authority to issue tickets or make arrests. Does that remain true on the security that is being put together?
Assuming they are not State Patrol or Lancaster County Sheriff that are working, yes. And even that, they would be limited in their authority based upon what their jurisdictions have given them. So security is just like anybody... The person that you see at Target or any of the other, what their authority is to enforce the rules and to report law violations, but they should not be making any arrests, transporting, using force, hopefully not, because that complicates whether or not they have legal authority to do so, and are we then assisting in an unlawful arrest? So we have to have some clear alliances to their authority.
So if they're from the Sheriff's Department or from State Patrol, but they're not on duty, if they're acting in an off-duty capacity, is that a possibility?
Can you do it, Ms. Peters?
Yeah, I can say the both. Currently, the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office does not have staff that work for the security company that hires the security that work for Brian and his associates. They have not historically, and they do not today. The Nebraska State Patrol does. And it is my understanding, based upon past practice, that the Nebraska State Patrol does not have authorization to work in a law enforcement capacity. Therefore, they are acting as security guards. They are not acting as a law enforcement officer. They don't have powers of arrest, if that explains it. So really, Brian's security staff, some of which are trained law enforcement officers, they're just not acting in that capacity.
Correct.
Do act in concert with our officers that are there. Even when the Chief of Police is down there observing, they're coming up and engaging in conversation. So it is a good communication, somewhat of a different mission.
Yep. I will say that a lot of my security, especially my head security and the ones directly under him are military, reserve, currently acting military, so they have that background, that training. They're all CPR certified. They know how to administer first aid. They're willing to do so with consent, obviously, so, you know, it's not... We're not just hiring kids off the streets to come and throw on a yellow shirt and act as security. We have trained people in positions to assist with the officers, and we have the ability to pull in LEOs from other counties that will act in the security manner for Fryfrazee, which is the company that we employ, and I will employ them for an SDL should we need one.
Councilwoman Raybold?
So Brian, I am troubled by the number of minor in possession
Yep.
that were cited last Saturday. Can you tell me the process? I understand that you most likely banned the adults.
Yep. So...
What happens with younger people that are allowed in the area?
Yeah, so to the chief's point, like, we do... It does speak to what we're doing as a security... As preventative measures for us on our security's behalf. We are going in, we are identifying minors and how they obtain wristbands, and one of the easiest things to do is they'll get a wristband from a friend and simply twist it on the bottom, and, you know, we know what to look for with the wristbands. They're either on the way they were intended to be, or they're not, and that's an easy way for us to identify. So in the past, I was told that these people weren't being sent to be ticketed and cited. They were just simply caught in the rail yard and told to go home. So there was no follow-up. There was no... There was no ticket. There was no punishment for getting caught. It was simply, oh, I got busted. I can't stay in the rail yard today. By us doing this, we're sending the message that you can come to the rail yard and try to do this, but if you do, you are going to get a ticket, and you are going to have that to deal with that. And I can say, since last year, the number that I've seen is down. I would have to look and see what the numbers were from last year, but just in the excitement that we've had in two games, or a game and a... Should have been a game, the number's down compared to the amount of people that we've had in the rail yard. But it's to the point of our security doing their job and finding these people and preventing them. Those numbers would be a lot higher if we were just simply, you know, putting the message out there that the rail yard's place, you can drink as minor and not get caught and not have any punishment for that.
So basically, if they're wearing a band, then they can consume alcohol?
We still minor... We still check them.
Name, address, phone number.
Eric F. Marsh. I live at 19504 Emily Street in Elkhorn, Nebraska. I own Long Wells Enrolled G. And this topic's near and dear to me. The reason you see the MIP reported the urination in public is because when we see someone doing something wrong, we hold them accountable. All right? From a businessman perspective, someone was in my bar, they posted on Snapchat that they were doing shots in Long Wells. They were not a mine... Or they were a minor. I grabbed five bartenders. We stopped selling beer. We swept our restaurant. It took us three and a half minutes. We found her, we held her, we turned her over to the police, and we stood there, and we're adamant that she got a ticket. So that's one of the 12. We see somebody using the restroom in someplace that's not the restroom. We go and get... We call them yellow coats. Hopefully, they're not offended by that. They get... They go and get a blue coat, and we stand there until they get ticketed, because we're the witness. So the numbers that you hear reported from the police are because... And we don't want the numbers high, but we want everyone who does something to be held accountable. All right? Our lines were long. In the rail yard, there were four closed windows. If we wanted to sell more beer, we could have. When we put a beer thing out in the street, we don't think we're going to sell more beer faster. We're just using that to offset the cost of closing the street, because it costs so much money. And that's how we do get the buy-in of all the tenants of the rail yard, because not everyone sells as much alcohol as I'm going to say we do on the first floor. So they don't want to pay for their share of an SDL, because it's just added cost. So that's why we do how we do it. We're not going... Because we've had our two biggest crowds of the year. We had the home opener, air quotes, and then we had Colorado. The crowds are not going to get bigger for us. So what we've seen, we're over the hump. We want to do this. We want to do it right. And we want the city council's, you know, backing in order to do it. Right?
Other questions from the council? Would anyone else in the audience like to testify on this item? Seeing no one else. See anyone from the council have questions for staff? All right. Teresa, we're at the end?
Yes, we can vote on these items.
And we usually have my friend John here to help us, but I'm looking for some help.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve items 4A through 4O.
Second?
Motion by Councilman Eskridge and a second by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Councilwoman Lamb?
I would ask that we just do through 4N.
So the motion has been amended. Is everyone okay with that? So discussion of a motion to approve items 4A through 4N. Discussion? Hearing done, would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
I would like a motion on 4O, please.
So moved?
Second?
A motion by Eskridge, second by Raybold. Comments? Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. I share the chief's concern with the resources being spread so thinly. I am concerned about what happens down there and the crowds, and I realize they think we're over the hump, but we're still in the first of the Scott Frost era. I don't know that we're going to get any smaller. We've added seats and so forth. I am, though, in having these discussions, I am hopeful, because I know that we're adding a number of officers that'll be out there for next year's and maybe even by January because I know that we have some in classes and so forth or that are doing their right along. So, I'm not able to support this at this time.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Would anyone else like to testify? Yes, Councilwoman Eskridge.
Thank you. Always appreciate our law enforcement and Chief Blimeister's personal interest in this public safety is the biggest thing we do in this community. And having been on the Internal Liquor Committee since day one, for me on council, I realize how important this issue is for us. Also realize that we have this whole entertainment district that serves our community. We have individuals, companies who have invested significantly in terms of their time and money and energies to make this a good experience. And that's what it needs to be. It needs to be a good experience for everyone. It needs to be policed properly, it needs to be maintained and orderly. In a sense, it's safer, I think, by having more room rather than having the situation we had a couple of years ago during the Miami game where we didn't have an SDL and everybody was crowded into the rail yard itself. I think this is actually a safer and better environment for the community. It's an afternoon game, so it's not an evening game, which I think does present greater problems, both for what happens there and also what happens in the stadium. So, on a one-time basis, I think it's time for us to give this a try.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, anyone else like to speak?
I have a question.
Yes.
Was there a recommendation that came out of ILC on this?
I don't know that we've ever really made a recommendation. We talked about criteria, you know?
I think that there was, I recall reading in the application, or the ILC application, I think, had to do with the restricted hours. And I think is, Tanya still here?
Yes, she is.
So, basically, we had two council members that maybe wanted to try this again and one council member that was not in favor, didn't feel, that would be my perspective. But we did come up with some criteria that if an application was going to come back, here are the minimums. And the applicants have met that, everybody's part of the application. We limited it to canopy street, no closure of art, different things that we had talked about before. The one thing that was kind of left unclear at that meeting was the timeframe. So, I suggested to the application that council person, Raybold, had suggested last time, two hours before and two hours after as a discussion point. There is still concerns with the two hours after in clearing the street. If there's a large crowd, I think it'll be difficult for them to clear the street. But at the same time, it is a public street. The idea was to try it on a limited timeframe, so two hours before and two hours after gives it some boundaries. My suggestion would be to end it before the game is over. That way, you don't have that massive crowd. But the applicant was willing to go two hours before and two hours after. So, that's what we presented to council today. If that clarifies.
Did it help, Councilwoman? You have additional?
Yeah, so I believe it said in our resolution, it says, "The identification is to be checked, wristbands required, that the adequate security shall be provided for the event," which I'm presuming is going to be per the recommendation of the Police Department.
Correct.
"The area requested shall be separated from the public and then the alcohol service practice shall be followed." And then I had thought that there was something about food, but I don't see that now.
It's in, their food tents are identified in their map. We didn't put it specifically in their recommendation because they've identified it in the map. But you should have your time limitations in that first paragraph, I believe. I think it was noon to eight.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not exactly two hours before and after, of course, because we kind of have a floating time, but on a limited basis that way. So, at least two of the current food providers will have a street booth in front of their location. Originally, it was identified to be further away, but because of health permits, if they do it right outside of their business, they don't have to get another permit. So, that'll provide some additional food service on the street.
Other questions from the council? Seeing no one, are we ready to call the roll? Councilwoman Gaylor Baird?
I'll just add that this is difficult because there's been a lot of investment in the rail yard. People, I think all of us would like to see the rail yard succeed and thrive. Really appreciate that they're monitoring things so closely and taking pains to enforce not only their business practices and rules, but also the city's regulations. That said, it's very difficult to have our Chief of Police be pretty clear that he can't ensure adequate staffing to meet the public safety standards that our residents expect. I don't know if in the future, there could be a way to try to work with LPD officers to make commitments earlier for events like this. It's not clear to me that that's possible, but if it's possible, I'd be certainly interested to know if we could try to work with our officers, who I understand are already, you know, being asked to make commitments well in advance and have to take a whole week off if they don't want to work game days. But I don't feel like I can support this either and without more support from our public safety personnel. So, I'm going to regretfully decline to support this.
Councilwoman Raybold?
You know, I'm going to support this measure. It really is the responsibility of the businesses to rise up to the occasion of doing everything that they possibly can in the interests of public safety for this event to succeed. And I am more than confident that the businesses involved know exactly what is at stake and will rise to that occasion. And that's why I will support this, so that they will have the opportunity to prove just that.
I serve with Councilwoman Eskridge on the Internal Liquor Commission and I have some concerns about staffing as well, much as my fellow councilpeople have expressed. I also want our city to be successful, exciting and a destination for lots of people to go. I'm concerned about the staffing, but I think this is an opportunity to see if the system works with some parameters and we'll gather some data and move forward from here. Seeing no one else wishing to comment, I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried, three to two. Failed, three to two.
Wait, what? Yes, please come forward.
Jeff Kapatrick, City Attorney. Under city council rules, in order to pass any piece of legislation, you need four affirmative votes.
Okay. So, I guess we're moving-
Wait, I have a question for Jeff.
Jeff, would you come back? Thank you.
So, Jeff, because we voted in the manner that we did, if we had our additional city council members present, there would be the possibility of an additional vote?
Right. And let me go further. The vote was three to two. There weren't four votes for it or four votes against it. So, under council rules, this matter would automatically come up on the next council agenda, assuming, of course, it would be timely.
So, you're saying that next week, do we have to request that it be brought up or it's automatically brought up?
Will automatically come up next week.
On September 17th?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions from the council for the city attorney?
Just, I think Tanya's coming up. I don't know that that gives them the 10 days for the commission, then.
They have to submit their application to the Liquor Commission 10 days before the event. And part of that application, they have to submit the local approval. So-
And it's 10 working days, not calendar days.
10 working days. So, what we can do is go ahead and take up a vote next week. They can submit and then we'll just have to see what the Liquor Commission does. That's, I mean, kind of, that rule is outside of our hands, but we can try it. What I would recommend to them is go ahead and get their application started and then that way they meet that timeline and then they can just supplement it with whatever happens from the city.
Other questions from the council? So, I think we're done with that agenda item for this week. Teresa, what is our next agenda item? We're going to public hearing resolutions?
Yes, next are public hearing resolutions. Item 5A, renaming of University Place Park at North 48th and Francis Street as Sang Park at University Place in recognition of Mayor Colleen Singh's public and community service.
Good afternoon. Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Park Recreation. That's what I just did.
I don't think it was you.
I'm going to wait for the ELMA unit to come up, please.
Bam. Or maybe not.
There we go. There we go. We're live. As the city clerk indicated, the action before the city council this afternoon is a proposal to rename University Place Park as Sang Park at University Place. The image on the screen has University Place Park identified in green. University Place Park is a community park located at North 48th Street and Francis Streets. It's located south of the University Place Business District. There is University Place Pool, a ball field, horseshoe courts, public restrooms, a playground, a park shelter, tennis courts and parking areas are located within this park. Dead Man's Run, as you probably know, courses through this park. We did some research to determine how this piece of property was acquired. It appears that it was, excuse me, acquired incrementally during a period of time between the 1920s and the 1950s. We did not find any restriction on naming of the park or any indication on any of the deeds that it be named University Place Park. The University Place area, the town of University Place, was annexed to the city in 1926. And the lore of this park is that the University Place business, I think probably businessmen at that time advocated that it be a place name that recognized that area. The proposal is to rename this park in recognition of Colleen Singh's, both her community service and her public service. Mayor Singh served 16 years as the Northeast Lincoln representative on the city council between 1987 and 2003. And then she then served a four-year term as Lincoln's 50th mayor from 2003 to 2007. The Parks and Recreation Facility naming guidelines state that a park can be named in recognition of civic accomplishments by an individual related to the department's activities. Colleen Singh, for a period of time, served on the University Place Community Organization. One of the activities that was taking place at that time was the Northeast Radial Reuse Project. And Upco Park is a neighborhood park at about 40th and Adams Street. And Colleen was a strong advocate, or Mayor Singh, excuse me, was a strong advocate of the development of that piece of property as a, excuse me, as a public park site. Mayor Singh served as tri-chair and advocate for the Antelope Valley Project. As you all know, that community revitalization was a major element of that project. And out of that community revitalization emphasis came the development of what today's University Place Park, pardon me, as Union Plaza Park, the extension of the Rock Island Trail all the way to Salt Creek and some major renovation work that happened in Trejo Park as well. When Mayor Singh was serving as city council member, she was a major advocate for replacement of University Place Pool. That was about a 50-year-old pool at that time and we did a major renovation and replacement of that project in the early 2000s. And then finally, Mayor Singh, both in her role as city council member and as mayor, has been a strong advocate of Lincoln's Community Learning Center initiative. So, she's been a strong supporter of both recreation programming and youth programming in the community. The University Place Community Organization, and I should note that Mayor Singh served on, as a member of the University Place Community Organization for a number of years. But Upco has recommended this naming. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board reviewed this proposal back in August and they unanimously recommended renaming University Place Park as Sang Park at University Place. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have this afternoon.
Councilwoman Eskridge?
So, you answered a mystery for me. So, on Adams Street, there's Upco Park. And this is University Place. So, these are, I always thought they were the same name, but they're actually different names. But this, but they're so close, it's kind of confusing. This would help. To me, it would.
I absolutely agree, yeah. Obviously, Upco Park was named after the community organization, it's kind of like Echo Park. But yeah, I think this will alleviate some of that confusion about Upco Park and University Place Park.
Other questions from the council? Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Hello, council representatives. I'm Larry Moffett. I'm the pastor of First United Methodist Church in University Place. And it's been my privilege to work with Mayor Singh in a variety of roles for our congregation, for the community and to be her pastor for a part of the time when she was mayor. I'd like to speak in favor of this proposal for a variety of reasons. First is, there's widespread support and a lot of joy and affirmation for Mayor Singh and the things that she has done in the whole city. In particular, in the University Place neighborhood, there are a lot of streets that were gravel or mud when she first started work with Upco and in her work at First United Methodist Church as Community Ministries Director and then in her work as City Council Representative. There are an awful lot of other things that have happened through her leadership. But one of the key things that I think naming this park, Sang Park at University Place, would do is help us keep the stories alive of people who have made sacrifices and who have served the public good selflessly. And Colleen is one of those. And I think she would very much appreciate this. But what I know is, we would appreciate the opportunity to tell the stories of some of the things she and many others working with her have been able to do to make Lincoln a better place to live.
Thank you. Questions for Pastor Moffett? Thank you very much. I see someone else would like to come forward and testify.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Mike DeKalb. That's D-E-K-A-L-B. I'm going to put on my Upco Park hat, or my awful neighborhood hat.
You're confusing him again.
I'm trying to confuse him again. We're going to make it simpler, which stands for University Place Community Organization. And I would say, remind you that Colleen helped establish that neighborhood organization. She was very active in citizen participation as a council member, a mayor and a neighborhood activist and member of First Church. She helped form the neighborhood organization. She was the second president of the neighborhood organization. She was the stimulus in the great conversation of the Northeast Radial, which some of us are going to remember, and then in reusing that right away and replanning and relaying that out. So, we got Upco Park, naming it after the neighborhood organization, but we also got the trail extension going past there and a division between the park being an edge and a linear edge between it and the industrial areas next to the park. And we already have more stories in the future with 33rd and Cornusco realignment. But I wanted to come up to, as a past president, the current board member and a long-term resident of the neighborhood to support this name change application. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for this testifier and support?
Thank you.
Mr. Kalb?
I know we have other people in the way I'd like to talk to.
Okay. Would others like to testify on this behalf? Excuse me, let me do that again. Would others like to testify on this agenda item?
Teresa, yeah.
Yeah. I will do that. Those who are here in favor of this agenda item, would you raise your hand? Thank you very much. Can we move to our next item, then?
Next is 5B, adopting the Lincoln Electric System rate schedules to become effective October 1st, 2018.
Good afternoon. Laura Kapuska with Lincoln Electric System. In case the voice goes. I have copies of these presentations for you. There we go. Thank you.
One more. Pardon? Could we have one more?
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, here to talk to you about some new electric rates and riders, not what we're normally here to talk about. And because it is outside the norm, we'll talk a little bit about why we are here to talk- talk about this and why we would like you all to approve them. Get that one. Oh, well, that didn't work well. Okay, this should not be hard. I need my flipper.
There we go. Stop.
Okay, got it. All right, there we go. Okay. So we've been working on these rates and riders for almost a year right now, trying to get it, get it just right. And these are really in anticipation of customer requests, not something that we need right now, but more of a proactive approach. And as you know, any new rates and riders need to be approved by the LES Board as well as city council. So our LES Board has previously approved them, so we're here today now to talk to you about them. This is gonna be embarrassing, I get this wrong every time. Okay, well, that's simple. It goes right side up. All right. There we go. It's not like the old, I used to have to flip them over. So today, we're asking for approval of one electric rate and three electric riders. So to talk a little bit about what the difference is between the two of them, an electric rate is a primary rate that we all have. For us, for our homes, it would be like a residential rate. There's business rates, commercial, industrial. Whereas a rider is a little bit different in that you, it attaches to, or it's an add-on to a rate schedule. So you have to have an underlying rate that you're on, and then you can attach a rider to it. So for example, today, we have sun shares riders. If you want to contribute to the solar facility, then you can add the sun shares rider onto So the first item to bring to attention is the market energy rate. So this is the one rate, actually. We are wanting to put this rate in place to attract very large customers who would like to have access to real-time pricing. So what does that mean? That means they want to actually get the pricing that we pay for energy out of the Southwest Power Pool. So instead of having a fixed energy rate, they would get the daily SPP energy price. So they're big enough, they're willing to take that risk. To come with it, though, they do have to pay for their own substation. The kind of customers that might be interested in this are very large customers. Think of maybe two times a Kawasaki plant. If you remember hearing about Facebook coming to Omaha, OPPD put in a similar rate to this. So there's not a lot of customers that want that market energy rate risk, but some of them do. In all of these rates and riders, I do wanna make sure and point out that they're all cost-to-service based. So we are not giving away something for free. So if they're causing us to incur a cost, it's included in the rate. So a customer like this is still gonna have to pay for transmission service because they're using it. They're still having to pay for their share of our generation, generating plant because we have to have that in place. But they don't have to pay for the distribution system because they're gonna take their energy at a transmission level. So that's the thing that's kind of different about this one. So now moving on to the economic development rider. Again, this is in anticipation of a customer hoping to come to our area, and we're really developing it to attract new load to the area. A lot of times, if customers are looking to locate in an area, they won't, they'll look right over here if you don't even have an economic development rate to offer to them. So we do feel we need to get this put in place. The way this one works, and this was really, you have to be a fairly large customer also to be on this, this rate, or this rider, sorry. But how it works is that the customer will pay for all of the normal costs that you would pay for, your customer charge, your facilities' charge, your transmission costs. But the costs for the generation plant, they, the generating costs, they receive a discount on it. So its standard is a five-year declining discount, fifty percent, the first year down to ten percent discount in the fifth year, but then they have to stay on for another five years. So it's a total, like, ten-year commitment. If they leave after year five, they would have to pay back the discounts to us. So it helps existing customers in that currently, they would be paying the full cost of our generating facilities. So any amount that this new customer comes is helping to reduce the costs they have to pay. And then eventually, by year six, they're paying their full costs. When we developed this rate, we looked around, we wanted to make sure we weren't being too aggressive in what the discount was. And what we found is that we were really kind of right in the middle of the line. We had people that had bigger discounts and those that had smaller discounts, but this seemed like a good place for us and to attract customers, future customers. These next two riders are very similar to each other. The interruptible rider, it is a rider that a customer can add to their underlying rate. Again, it's a large customer. And what it allows them to do is nominate a certain amount of their load that they're willing to cut or reduce when we call upon them. So this is not voluntary. They'll receive a discount all year round for that amount of load that they've told us they can cut. And we can call them twenty times a year and ask them to cut that load for up to four hours. If they don't do it, there's a pretty significant penalty, and we can actually ask them to go off the rate if they don't comply with it. So why this is good for LES and our customers is that, to the extent that we can keep our total demand on the system down, it helps us forego the next, need for that next generating plant or push it off. The other thing it does is we're able to capture some transmission savings from SPP when we are able to keep monthly demand levels down also. Okay, and the final one today is the curtailment rider. So to the extent that the interruptible rider was not voluntary, this one is very similar, except for it is voluntary. So the customer is not given a discount every month. They're only given a discount when we call upon them to cut their load and if they're able to do it. So there is no penalty if they don't curtail. It is voluntary on their own to do it. We are able to, to the extent that they comply with the call, we're able to reduce those transmission costs as we could in the previous one. This rider is only good in the summer, which is when we are typically peaking. And it's a little bit less stringent on the customer in that we can only request, over the summer months, ten different times for asking them to curtail, and between four and eight in the afternoon, which is when we would be peaking. And finally, then, as far as implementation, as I mentioned, our board already approved these in June. Assuming that you all take action today, we would make them effective October 1. Oh, I also wanted to mention, we did have a public meeting to give a chance for the public to comment on these, and we really received only positive comments. There wasn't really any negative comments. So any questions?
Thank you. Are there questions? Councilwoman Lamb, and then Councilwoman Raybo.
Thank you. Thanks for being here today. So as I understand it, these are, basically, they all have to do with yard, larger electrical users.
That would be correct.
Okay. And I really like the idea of the curtailment, because as I understand it, that we would have identified folks who may be available for us to cut when we have, we have peak hours that are going to perhaps interrupt service. So is that my understanding of what the whole strategy is behind this type of thing?
Right. And that one is, they volunteered. We had a prior program, it was called Power Purchase Program, and it wasn't in the form of a rate or a rider. So we're kinda converting that now to a rider. And we had a couple of companies locally that would voluntarily curtail.
Okay, thank you. And then I had one more question, because you had mentioned at the beginning that the market energy rate generally was generated by customer request or interest of some sort. And so, and then you mentioned a firm maybe twice the size of Kawasaki. Do we have someone that's come forward and asked for this?
No, we are really being proactive. You know, you kinda gotta, kind of are watching what's going around you in other local areas in Nebraska. And so we wanna be, you know, have it in place.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Raybo.
You mentioned that the interruptible rider is not voluntary. So if a company decides, once you notify them that they've exceeded their acceptable power usage, if they choose not to comply, if they, and you said it's not a voluntary, how are, how are you explaining this to businesses? And how are you introducing it to them? And since you said it's not voluntary, how are they gonna be made aware that, are they gonna, is this gonna be replacing a power factor penalty? Or how are businesses supposed to acknowledge this and accept it?
Okay, so we don't have anybody wanting to sign up for this right now. The reason why this one does have a penalty is because they get the discount twelve months a year, so all year they get it, because we're counting on them to cut that energy, that power when we need them, reduce their demand when we need them. So these, we anticipate that these customers that would sign up for an interruptible rider would have an energy management system in place so that they're able to monitor that they've got their demand low. We've also talked internally that if we have somebody that their incentive, or their intention was to cut and they just messed up, that we would allow them to go off the rider and then come back on the next year instead of having them pay the penalty, because it is a very sizable penalty, it's ten times the discount. But we need them to be there. That's how we can pay the discount and how we derive, how we and LES customers derive the value out of it.
But I thought you said it's not voluntary. So you're gonna automatically enroll several businesses in this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's not voluntary whether you decide to reduce your demand.
Okay.
Whether you decide to sign up for this rider is completely up to the customer to do that.
So what is the incentive to the business? Once they have their energy management system in place, how are, how are they going to see the actual benefit of a rider like this?
So on their monthly bill, they'll see this discount. It's a $5.14 KW demand. They'll see that discount every month on their bill. So they'll have their demand charge, and then they'll have a subtraction, a credit for this demand.
So again, if they fail to curtail based on your notification that they've exceeded, if they decline to do it because of whatever reason, then they, you said that they have to pay back at a penalty ten times?
That is what the penalty would be to charge for them.
That month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But you can see that if it's ten times, that if you curtail one month, you only have, with twelve months and a year, you don't have a lot of time to make, to make up for that charge. So it really needs to be a customer that has a really good handle on their energy use that could sign up for something like this. And then it's a pretty significant discount that they're getting.
Okay, and then going to the curtailment rider, you said that is voluntary, that they have to comply with.
Right. So both of these, they decide whether they go on the rider or not. But on the curtailment rider, if we call them and ask them to curtail, and they say, "I just can't," then there's no penalty, and they get no discount paid to them.
For that month?
For, no, they only get paid the discount if they curtail. So that's what's different between the two. As a curtailment rider, you're only paid if you curtail, versus the interruptible, you're paid every month.
So then how are some of these all different than the power factor penalty, that a business may exceed their customary and normal usage?
Right. So the power factor correction, that's going to be, you know, in the way the customers use the energy, that's completely different, and it's still in place in the underlying rate schedule. So these attach to the rate schedule. You still have the terms and conditions of the underlying rate schedules.
Okay.
I wanna go with that just a little bit. And she went to where I was going. The people that sign up for the rate where they're getting, I signed up for it, I'm good for a year, I'm getting a discount. If you call me because you have a demand someplace else in the system and you want me to curtail, right? It's not the power factor where I went over. It's changing demand across the system.
Right.
And you need me to curtail. And since I've been getting a discount, I should comply.
It's a hot day in August?
Yes.
Five o'clock at night, everybody's coming home, flipping on the air conditioners, and we're trying to reduce that overall demand on the system.
I've gotten a discount for the last six months, so you're asking me to curtail for four hours?
Right.
And I say, no problem, I can do that. I've saved a bunch of money already.
You wanna talk about power factor correction?
The power factor threw me off, yeah.
Hi, Kevin Wales, CEO of LES. One thing that I heard was kind of a confusion between power factor and what we're talking about here. Power factor is a characteristic of a load. In other words, if you have a lot of motors on, you're gonna have a low power factor caused by that inductive load. And that's a reactive power component for us. It's actually measurable, and we have to change the output of generators in order to make that happen. So it costs more when you aren't basically approaching unity power factor. Now, sometimes people confuse that with load factor. Load factor is basically the percentage of the time you're at that highest level of usage. So if you, if ninety percent of the time, you're running right close to what you always do, that's where you hear power fact, or hear load factor as opposed to power factor. These really aren't reflective of that. These are looking at when you're using and the ability to cut back part or all of your load, so that in fact, you can help us meet demands.
That's above our pay grade. That's what they didn't teach you in business school.
Councilman Eskridge?
Yes, thank you. Wanted to ask a little bit about market energy rate versus the economic development rider. Are both of those available for existing businesses? For example, you've mentioned the Kawasaki example. So if they get a huge contract for autonomous vehicles and suddenly they double their capacity, would they?
Right. I did forget to mention that. Both of those are not only for new customers, but expansion of existing customers.
Okay.
They could also utilize the rate and the rider.
The threshold for the economic development rider is a lot lower than that for the, for the market energy rate, because it really requires not only a very sophisticated customer, but that significant investment in substation facilities, so.
Okay. That answers it.
Councilwoman Gaylord Barrett.
Thank you. I just was curious how you anticipate any impact to your budget as a result of these incentives being offered, and also any anticipated changes in practices by large users, regardless of your request to come knocking on their door for reduced energy.
It's really hard to anticipate one of these, like a market energy rate, a really, or economic development customer coming. So to that extent, we really don't build that into the budget. And we, because we've had really no or very, very little expressed interest in these, you wouldn't see us in our budget anticipating that these discounts would be paid and, yeah.
Yeah, that, and I think, in fact, we talked about it last weekend, but there was a, in effect, and Laura mentioned this, there is somewhat of a beauty contest when companies first look at coming and they ask some general questions. Our rates are very competitive now. As you all know, we're eighth lowest under the last national rate survey. But that doesn't necessarily meet what people are expecting when the business is coming in and they've hired these consultants to do these surveys. So we're trying to make sure that we've got things so when they check the box, it'll get them here so we can talk to them. And usually, you can't go through this whole process of developing that stuff. You need to have it kind of in your toolbox to be able to do that. The other thing that was very important for us with respect to the economic development rate was to make sure that it was applicable, particularly to our local customers, so that when they're expanding, for example, this gives them that same discount. You know, we will have to watch that, because the discount is really easier for us to do now, because we have excess capacity on the system that we're marketing off the system. So we have the ability to do that now. Later on, we may have to adjust those rates, because as you, as you know, we're concerned about what the impact is on the rest of our customers.
Other questions from the council? Thank you. And Mr. Wales. Does anyone else in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one else coming forward, we're...
All right, we can vote on these items, then.
Yes.
Item 5A was introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
motion by Councilwoman Lamb, and second one by Councilwoman Gaylord Barrett. Any additional discussion? Yes, Councilwoman Lamb, and then Councilwoman Raybo.
Thank you. I think this is a wonderful resolution. I really like the idea of recognizing for Mayor Singh, for her service, community service. And let me tell you what, up in Northeast Lincoln, they only touched on a bit of what her participation has been and the work that she's done up there. And so I'm really looking forward to this. I think it's great work, and I'm glad to see it. And I know she's too humble to be here herself and probably would rather not even have had this up here and us talking about it, but I appreciate her. And she remains active today, coming to the Lincoln Northeast Citizens Meeting and contributing on... and contributing on a monthly basis. So, thank you. Here's Seng.
Councilwoman Raybold?
I intend to support this. It truly is an honor to, to recognize Mayor Seng for her service, her advocacy of everything about our city of Lincoln, and certainly her passion for the Northeast area, where she truly was an activist, all up and down, for all kinds of issues that would positively enhance the community that she was so proud to call home. And you know, there are so many facets of Mayor Seng, of her outreach throughout our city. And I, I just can tell you that I am truly the beneficiary of having her as a wonderful mentor, encouraging women to consider and run for political office, and being a, a tireless supporter of, of women, and really setting a, a high bar for all of us, but just being a wonderful role model and example for so many young women in our community. So for her activism and her enduring legacy of contribution to our city, I think this is a wonderful recognition of an amazing woman.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilman Eskridge, and then Councilwoman Gaylord Barrett, wrap up.
Thank you. And thanks for my colleagues for, for supporting this. It's interesting because the, the park's name is Seng Park. It's not Colleen Seng Park. And that is because, as I understand it, she didn't want it Colleen Seng Park, she wanted it Seng Park, to recognize her husband, her husband's family, others with the Seng name. And so it, it represents a whole tradition of, of people that, that are important to her. So it's a great, great step.
Councilwoman Gaylord Barrett?
Councilman Eskridge beat me to it at the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. That was what we were told, that not only is this a fitting tribute to her many years of service that continue today, but that it, she, she preferred to leave it at Seng in order to honor her wider family's contributions to Northeast Lincoln over the years. And I think that speaks to the selflessness that we heard other people testify about today.
Thank you. I think we're already, would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Barrett?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Item 5B was introduced by Camp.
So moved.
I'm supposed to gavel you down, but...
I moved.
Do you need a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Motion by Councilwoman Lamb, second by Councilwoman Eskridge. Discussion? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Barrett?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Next then, our public hearing ordinance's second reading. Item 6A, amending 9.20.050 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to disturbing the peace to include the use of electronic devices.
Good afternoon. Jessica Kerikoff is Chief Prosecutor at the Law Department. And I'm here to talk about an amendment to our municipal code section 9.20.050, also known as disturbing the peace. This amendment incorporates language recently adopted by the state legislature in their intimidation by phone statute, expanding that to include communication devices. This really is a classic example of the law catching up to reality, and the types of offenses and fact patterns that we see in prosecuting this type of offense. Basically, this amendment would defines, further defines disturbing the peace as using a phone, or any type of transmission of electronic communication to threaten or harass another person by using obscenities, obscene, suggesting obscene acts, threatening physical or mental injury, attempting to extort money from someone to get them to do something, or to avoid some other type of physical harm or injury. It also includes a venue provision, which is extremely important in attempting to prove up this type of offense, meaning that venue is, is found wherever the document, sorry, the electronic communication originated, or where it was received. So, for example, we may have a victim here in Lincoln, but the communication might have began in Omaha, or Fremont, or somewhere else. And, and as long as we can prove that there was a reception of the communication here in Lincoln, we can overcome that venue potential problem that we have had without this amendment in proving up disturbing the peace offenses. So just to be clear, this isn't really expanding anything that we already do. It's not opening up an avenue of new offenses for us, or new tickets, new police reports for us to be looking at. It really is addressing something that we've been seeing for years and years and years, and not trying to fit kind of square facts into, around law, and really giving us an opportunity to, to prove up those offenses that we're already getting.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gaylord Barrett?
Thank you. I certainly appreciate the intent of this change to the code. I was curious how this relates, or is contemplated alongside First Amendment free speech rights, and how you define obscenity, and if that's something that's already handled in the code, or if this is a new treatment of those issues?
I suppose that sort of remains to be seen as its new language to the statute also. I can tell you that because the law contemplates an intent to harass, and intent to threaten, and intent to intimidate someone, it's probably taking it somewhat out of that First Amendment protection, and getting more into sort of that fighting words, or the hate speech, or that, that unprotected area of free speech. It's going to really depend on the fact patterns that we see specifically. But I think including that intent language kind of takes it out of that, out of that protection, that intent to do harm to another.
Intent to do harm, but hate speech. I mean, I guess we had a resolution kind of condemning hate speech here at the council, but we weren't, you know, we weren't told that we could potentially outlaw that. So I guess I'm trying to just understand the nuances of this before we vote on it.
When I'm, and really I'm basing it probably on past experience of fact, police reports that I've seen, and the violations that I've seen. We're not seeing, well, take that back. We have seen some types of offenses where people are making threats based on some of those protected classes, gender, sexuality, race, and/or religion. We haven't had that issue, issue raised in that context of, of First Amendment protection. I really don't foresee it being an issue that we would really be prohibited from proceeding on. These types of offenses are really fact-specific, so it's hard to generalize them. But in my First Amendment research, I don't see that this is going to be really a problem in the types of cases that we've seen. You know, there are more serious matters that, you know, when you have certain hate speech, or, or violence involving a protected class, where it kind of ratchets up the offenses, and those are going to be outside of our prosecution ability and go to the county. So for what we're seeing, it's not, I, I don't foresee it being an issue.
So just because I'm not familiar with the cases, is the threat of violence the distinguishing factor that helps you?
Generally speaking, yes. I mean, we're, you know, we're talking about, you know, the, the text, the Facebook, the Snapchat, the Twitter, all of that type of thing, where, and some of those Craigslist, you know, some of those suggestions of pornographic photographs and things like that, that are sent to other people with the intent to harass or intimidate. So those usually come along with violence, some sort of either overt statement of violence, or certainly the suggestion of it, based on what's said or depicted.
Councilwoman Lamb's up. If Councilwoman Gaylord Barrett has finished. I think she's still thinking.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Jessica. So I did have a couple of questions. One is, is cyberbullying going to be covered under this? Would that, if cyberbullying is considered to be harassment, are we going to now be able to see that prosecuted under this statute?
Honestly, I don't see a lot of that anymore in the adult realm, in the juvenile realm. Back when we were prosecuting juvenile offenses, we certainly would see that sort of thing more often. And I would generally feel comfortable if I'd had this language proceeding in that type of, of fashion. I think the inclusion of the, the threatening of mental injury, I think is really important in being able to kind of expand that into some of the more common cyberbullying language that can be seen, particularly with the young, with juveniles. But I'm not sure we're going to see that so much anymore.
My second question had to do with venue, which you addressed, and I appreciate that. Because back in the day, not so long ago, and very not so far away, I, when I was defending cases, there would be, and working in the prosecutor's office for just a short time at clinic, we used to have what was called tapes in machines, where people left messages. And I just wondered, it never, I guess I never even explored the idea of whether that could be prosecuted in this venue if it came from somewhere else. So have we done that in other aspects of disturbing the peace, or will this, or we will be going into new territory?
This is a new allowance for us to include this language. I, you know, we've kind of, like I said, fit the facts that we've been given by texts, or Snapchat and Facebook threats, and things like that. We've kind of fit them into our previous disturbing the peace language, which, and I think there's an argument, does it, does our current disturbing the peace language contemplate really face-to-face contact or not? I mean, I think you could probably, I mean, we've been successful in kind of making that argument, that it's not necessarily face-to-face contact that is required under that language. But with the venue factor, that really opens up our ability to, to prove these types of violations. I personally, a number of years ago, lost a disturbing the peace that involved a Craigslist case, where the defendant was posting this person's phone number on Craigslist, and he was getting phone calls, you know, these really awful phone calls. And the defendant was successfully arguing, you don't, he lived in Fremont, you don't know if I sent, made these posts in an airplane. You don't know if I made these posts in my bedroom. You don't know where I made these posts. And, you know, without that provision, you know, I, judge found I wasn't able to prove venue, basically. So this really helps out with that.
And so will the venue provision expand to cover anything else that's under that particular piece of code?
You mean as if we were trying to prove something under the existing language?
Correct.
I don't see why not. Again, I, I think, you know, really, the only language that is contemplated kind of in, in the existing section, that using abusive threatening or other fighting language, or gestures directed toward another person or persons, and I think you're probably going to be using electronic communication device maybe to, to do that. And if you are, we probably can make that argument under the new section B, that it fits in that as well. So I anticipate that venue provision really being part of that electronic, prove-up of that electronic communication fact pattern.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions from the council? Councilwoman Raybold?
Jessica, so basically, as you have been applying and using the disturbing the peace regulations, this is just a clarification of some terms, and I guess modernizing the disturbing the peace?
Modernizing, right. I mean, you could call it an expansion, but again, it's not creating something new that's not already happening. It's really a clarification of, things that we already deal with every day.
So with juvenile justice, will the county attorneys be able to use a specific language?
This is language that's adopted out of the statute that was passed, this past session, which is...
Nebraska Legislature.
Then, right, our state, state legislature. That's 281310 that was amended. And I, I really just took the language right out of that, since it was a Class III misdemeanor penalties match ours. They did take our minimum fine out of our ordinance to remain consistent with the state law, so we don't face any challenges in that regard on inconsistency.
Councilman Eskridge?
Yes, thank you. This is interesting. Obviously, First Amendment issues are extremely important, and that stands alone. But then, in terms of balancing it, and especially given all of the technology now, that, that really literally can bombard somebody. I know in the course of, of, I work with the state, I've seen 100 emails being sent over, you know, an hour's period of time, and threatening hateful, and they just keep coming and coming and coming. Numerous phone calls being, being made, and even when the office is closed, you know, hateful kinds of messages left, time after time. So those things add up. And I guess, what, what would you advise somebody who is, is getting that kind of trash? What, save it? How do you?
Preservation's important, for evidentiary reasons, obviously. You know, I think the police, somebody's going to call the police when they have had enough. You know, I think most people try to, whether it, and/or say to the other person, "Please stop," whether it's a, you know, ex-boyfriend, ex-girlfriend situation, or, you know, perhaps a government official and a, and a disappointed constituent, you know, whatever it is. There comes a point when everybody's had enough, and the police can investigate that. You know, a lot of times, it's enough for the police to contact that person and say, "Stop." You know, we see that plenty as well. And, and that can be enough to stop it. But when it's after that person has been asked to stop, and said, "You really need, this isn't wanted," and it keeps going, then citations could be issued. And obviously, we're going to review those in, in our experience, and what we believe the state of the law to be. I mean, there's a, you have a Supreme Court case, oh gosh, I don't know how many years ago, I lose track of time. It could be eight years ago, with the university official that was getting a number of emails. And there was a free speech issue in that case, and that, and the free speech ruled in that, in that particular situation. But again, those start to get really fact-specific on what was said, and when, and what warnings were given to the person to stop. And, and so, you know, we obviously take our experience and our discretion, and, and our knowledge of whatever the current state of the law is, and making that determination on whether or not we think it's something that's, that should be prosecuted.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
In looking at the existing code and the existing sort of conditions that are part of the definition of disturbing the peace, it does, like you sort of said, reference violence, engaging in fighting, threatening or violent conduct towards someone else, abusive threatening or other fighting language or gestures. In this new section B, it does say, as an overarching category, intentionally intimidate, threaten, or harass, and meets one of these other three conditions, one of which is threatening and inflicting physical or mental injury to someone, one of which is extortion, doesn't have to do with violence, but is illegal. That first one, though, is about obscene language. And I guess I just wanted to clarify, do we have it defined in our code elsewhere? Is it defined in some other governing document, such that this?
Not...
When a fact pattern is applied to this general language, can, can have some clear direction?
Yeah. And I guess off the top of my head, I can't think of that being defined in this context. I'd have to look at this. I know our code doesn't. Whether the statutes do, I guess I'm not 100% sure. I think, in the type of fact pattern I'm imagining that particular offense, we've seen photographic, pornographic photographs, that type of thing, being sent to people, to another person with a suggestion of engaging in something that that picture would suggest. that that picture would suggest. It's been unwanted. It's been, you know, said, don't send me that. That type of fact pattern is what I anticipate, I would anticipate seeing that type of, or seeing for that particular subsection. But I can certainly look to see if that's defined particularly, or if the legislature had any conversation about what that section meant. Get back to you on that.
Other questions from the council?
Do you think that that kind of research warrants a delay for a week, or?
We vote next week.
Oh, we vote next week, never mind. Okay, you can get back to us before the voting session. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this issue? Thank you very much. Teresa, we're ready for six B and C.
All right, they are Change of Zone 18013. Application for a change from AGR Agricultural to O3 Office Park and R3 Residential on property generally located at 8435 Firethorn Lane, as well as related use permit to allow up to 26,400 square feet of commercial area on approximately 2.74 acres with waivers to setbacks, lighting design standards, and access off the end of a private roadway at 8435 Firethorn. The applicant is Philip Winta.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, and Mark Hunzick are appearing on behalf of Mr. Winta. On this screen, we have a photograph, aerial photo of the area. This is along 84th Street where we have a gas line. And I'm sure you're aware of the restrictions that we're dealing with on the uses of land abutting major gas lines. And it runs along 84th Street and really affects about two-thirds of this property, which we have requested to be rezoned. This is Firethorn Lane. This is the insurance campus. And this is the property that we're dealing with here, along with this sliver here along the residential road to the east. The plan is to develop two office buildings on the site and three residential lots at the east end along the street. The second building, the east building, is not going to be built now. Mr. Winta lives in the house and intends to continue to live in the house probably for the next 10 years. It's, it is a nice house, and he wants to get some use out of the front part of the property, but he intends to remain there for quite some time. And of course, the area to the east will be eventually developed as residential. Now, this property, along with a number of others along 84th Street, is being redeveloped. And you will see applications similar to this coming forward for quite some time. Because we could not serve areas east of 84th Street with sewer, it is generally lined with large acreages and churches. The church sites are generally 20 acres or so. The acreages, many of them are that size, or some of them a little smaller because they predated the 20-acre rules. But these are the kinds of uses that you're going to see along this area. And the pipeline complicates their use for residential or for even things like daycare or hotels. The office use is one that is probably the least intrusive and least adverse to any sort of adjoining residential. Originally, the staff had a number of conditions that they were suggesting to go on this use permit, primarily dealing with what they thought would be changes beneficial to the owner to the south. The owner to the south submitted an email saying that they approve of the site plan that we have brought forward. And so we brought in a large, a fairly extensive motion to amend, to change that staff report, which the planning commission did with the concurrence of the staff, and adding a condition that we supply a new right turn lane westbound to northbound in Firethorn Lane at the intersection of 84th and Firethorn. At certain times of the day, now that with, particularly with the resort being open, that traffic backs up at times when the offices are emptying out and the resort is emptying out. And so it's, the right turn is needed. And the Public Works Department agreed that this was a sufficient solution to this problem. With that, I will stop and try to answer any questions and just remind you that the planning commission recommended approval of this unanimously.
Thank you. Questions? Councilwoman Raybo.
A couple of questions. I know in some of the concerns submitted by the neighbors, they felt that they were not kept apprised of this development and included in, I guess, follow-up meetings. How has that been handled?
Well, there was a meeting, a neighborhood meeting, that laid this out for the neighbors. As far as follow-up meetings, I mean, they obviously received notice of public hearings and so forth. I think there were two people who appeared at the planning commission. One was from the west side of 84th Street. The other was over on the east side of abutting the golf course, both having some concern about traffic. And I sympathize with the traffic concern. I mean, 84th Street is busy, but we really can't fix that. We have no ability to deal with it, with a project of this size. Though I think really, the only solution to traffic on 84th Street is building 98th Street. And if you can find a way to finance that, we would all appreciate it.
An additional question, you know, there was the conditional that was put on that that right turn lane be constructed by the applicant. How was that language incorporated in the agreement so that that is very clear? And are you including posting a bond for the completion of that designated right turn lane? Or how is that?
The condition is, in your resolution, I believe, is Condition 2.1.14, which says revise the site plan to show the right turn lane to be constructed by the applicant in Firethorn Lane, which means that is a condition of the use permit and is required in order for this project to go forward.
So I guess the timing of it, does the right turn lane have to be constructed before they will give the certificate of occupancy for any of the office buildings? Or how is that handled?
I'm not exactly sure of the timing of it. I think it's probably, the requirement would be that it be done simultaneously with the construction of the office building. I don't know whether they, whether building and safety has a mechanism for tying it to the occupancy permit, but they always check off every single condition when they issue building permits. They review the resolution that permits, that allows for the project, and they check off every item before they issue permits.
And then could you put up, Mark, on the overhead? You know, there was, I wasn't quite clear on what they were talking about, the shared driveway, and why that was removed as one of the conditions on the road realignment? Is that referencing?
There was originally a condition which required moving this drive to the east and to come around to the backside of this, of where the house is. And it has to do with the access management and the desire to line up these drives. But it was mostly a concern with the access that we are posing to come through from Firethorn Lane through the site and to get to the house to the south. The house to the south said, we're fine with that. And so those conditions were eliminated in favor of a condition which requires construction of the right turn lane all the way along here to allow for better movement in this, through this intersection.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Eskridge.
Thank you. That sketch you have right on top, yes, thank you. That intrigues me, because I'm seeing like six buildings kind of lined up on 84th Street, and I'm looking and studying that, and I'm seeing, okay, there can't be any access to 84th Street from them, so there has to be accessibility and connections behind it. And so this has to be, I mean, if that's the plan for the future for those parcels, then this all has to be coordinated and designed to fix. And that's why you have Mr. Marshall here, I'm guessing, so.
It is. The drawing here, from here to here, is not part of the application that you're reviewing.
Right.
This is showing how this area could be developed, showing office uses along 84th Street as much the same as what we're showing, and how the access to that area can be developed. And bringing the roadway into an area where you have the likelihood of a second outlet at some point in the future. Again, these properties are not part of our application, so this is all very, very conceptual and certainly is not binding on anybody.
I'll step up for a moment. Brad Marshall with Olson Associates, 600 P Street, 601 P Street, Suite 200. When we were working on planning on this, they recognized, you know, there's more than one acreage of a property here. And so we worked to devise a very conceptual, very conceptual plan. Kind of almost, if you will, worst case. Pipeline plan area, the restriction uses that are designated in those, you know, within 200, 220 feet of that pipe, pipeline, what could it be? And so office use is generally the most supported use in those particular areas. And so we showed from the very northern parcel how that could connect south and how through a multiple, not just three, but multiple acreages may be able to get to the next quarter-mile access. So if it did, and that's really the if, if it did go beyond this first property, we have to kind of align ourselves so that we're successful in the future development to the south.
Yeah, I appreciate the foresight in that because that's, again, for connectivity access to 84th Street. You know, that needs to be backed again, and you're the first, you're the first puzzle piece there. So thank you.
And I just want to point out again, even this concept is showing residential along this residential street on the west side of the street. So we're not suggesting that the office ought to back right up to that street.
Right.
Councilwoman Gayler, a bit.
Thank you. I just thought I'd check in about the staff report requirement that a revised grading and drainage plan be submitted. Is that something that's either underway or completed?
And it has been, yes. And this may go back to a question that Jane raised about, there actually, there was an initial submittal that only included the most western building. And upon working with staff, we revised the application to include the entire property. So, and then that's where the master planning concepts came about. And so there was some initial confusion, I should say, where properties were notified. But for instance, an HOA within Firethorn that's not registered was not actually notified properly, I suppose. So after we submitted the second time, we did have that public meeting where we were able to talk to those individuals and be more, sort of, be more upfront and show them the entire plan, what we are doing there. I will add, there are a couple of properties on the east side that we're doing administratively that will be brought into the Firethorn CUP special permit. And it was very important to that homeowners association that we came in, and we're going to be part of that, those covenants and adopt a very like-type use, a very like-type architecture and so forth. So we did agree to that as well.
I just wanted to follow up as well. I know, since I believe these were both called together, just with regard to the use permit, did you want to speak to any other conditions that have been placed on that you're honoring to help mitigate the impact of the change of zone and the uses that are allowed there?
I think, I mean, all the conditions of approval that are in your resolution are those which the staff suggested and/or agreed to modify as we went through this process.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you wanted to touch on any of them, if you want to, if any that haven't yet been discussed.
Again, I think Brad pointed out, these lots, the residential lots, are again, probably not going to be developed immediately, but they are going, this area is going to be included administratively in the Firethorn Community Unit Plan and will eventually be part of that homeowners association and have covenants that are very similar, if not identical, to that portion of the Firethorn development.
Were there some uses that were restricted, the O3 uses, or?
No.
I don't think so. I think we're...
No, it was straight O3. When we did hold the, I should say that being at the intersection we are that's signalized, it is probably the most appropriate for the O3 use. There was a comment about doing a traffic study. We did talk to Public Works about that being warranted. Per the access management policy, we're very much under the threshold to warrant it. But even at the neighborhood meetings, the primary concern was the traffic. We've got several large office users, runs a headquarters, is right down the street. That's opening, I don't think they're open yet, but I think they're opening, which will impact the additional traffic flow. So one thing that I can say, that I know they are making some signal improvements at the intersection to the next eighth mile to the north, which will allow the Allstate Insurance Company employees to actually turn south. Today, they use this intersection because they know, they do not have any route to the southbound traffic. And so that will help, that will help. It's not part of this project, but I did confirm that with Public Works that they are proceeding with those signal improvements. And I think the right thing here by the applicant has been done by taking the, putting his best foot forward where it may not have warranted a right turn lane, but it can help stop queuing traffic at that stoplight to be 20 to 25 cars in length where people are just turning, waiting to turn right. And so by adding that, I think will help some of the congestion there.
Councilwoman Raybo.
So Brad, I believe we vote next week on this. Will you have a chance to submit a revised drawing that does show that designated right turn lane?
We have, and I guess, we agreed to it at Planning Commission. We did have, here is... So the intersection is a wide, very wide intersection, right at the throat of 84th Street. And so right now, right at the intersection, it's almost 50 feet wide, but it narrows down pretty quickly. And there's really only two lanes. There's one designated marking right down the center of the road. If you can see here, we are proposing to build a right turn lane, basically, right after the church entrance, driveway. We have verified that it meets the new access management policy lengths, and we'll be able to construct it to standard. And I will note that one of the attendees at the neighborhood meeting was the church and the maintenance staff, and we did talk to them about working together and making sure that those turn lane improvements can be extended into some of the ditching and slopes with them, and they're very agreeable to that, so we're thankful for that.
Other questions from the council? Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on these two agenda items? Six B and six C. Seeing no one coming forward, that ends our public hearing portion on ordinances on second reading and related resolutions. We've been here for a few minutes, and I'd like to, with the council's permission, take about a 10-minute break, just for a refresher. And we'll come back right at 5:00, before 5:00, and finish up our voting section. Thank you. 10-minute break.
8 is approval of a purchase agreement by the city for the acquisition of the fee title for property generally located at 1318 M Street owned by St. Mary's Parish, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Raybold, second by Eskridge, discussion. I'd like to have some help. If, Mr. Landis, would you come and help explain to us where we are and what's going on?
It has been a while.
Yes, it has been a few minutes.
When we were last together, I described what I thought were the alternatives that the city was faced with. And I said, basically, one of them was, oh, David Landis, Urban Development.
Yeah.
One of them was Pershing, which had been talked about. One of them was to use eminent domain to secure half a block of downtown land, or the piece, the two pieces that you're faced with. The reason I actually wanted to tell you this was that for a day, that list was not exactly accurate. I got a call from an agent of one of the parties who had been resistant to selling land, who said, you know, there's been some change. I'd like to talk to my folks and maybe they would be interested.
Ooh.
So I said, well, yes, but get us a firm answer very quickly. Called back the next day and said, I did check and they aren't interested, and no, we don't want to sell.
Oh.
So for 24 hours, my characterization to you was potentially not accurate, but it is accurate. And if you had heard that secondhand or whatever, I didn't want you to not know that. I knew that and that we'd entertained it and that we pursued it, but it came to naught. Situation is identical to what I described to you before.
Okay. You got my hopes up for a second for, and then dashed them. So let's talk about, Councilman Lamb has some questions.
I'm sorry. And perhaps I just, I've got some kind of a glitch from last week, but I'm trying to figure out how 7A and 7B are connected.
The two pieces of property are necessary to get at the same time and in the same ownership so that, I'm sorry, what are 7A and 7B?
So 7A is the 1318 M Street acquisition of the property owned by St. Mary's Parish. And B is the purchase agreement between the city and Joseph Institute for the sale of property at 2140.
Thank you for asking me because I was thinking that we were talking about the pieces of land at 1300. At the very same time, I approached the church about the land that's, half of this. The church said, well, we're very interested. And by the way, we're very interested in renewing our request to buy this other land. So they would like to know that both purchases are acceptable of both parties. But that's, so they're not connected as a matter of the logic of building a garage? They're connected in the sense that two pieces of work by two parties who both want them done and want them done in the same timeline have asked that be happened. If you broke them out for separate action by an amendment, that would be entirely fine.
Well, they're not, they're not together now. They're too different. I, but so, but one, for instance, the purchase by the city of the property owned by St. Mary's, neither that purchase nor that price is contingent upon approval of the 2143.
Those are two different things. That's right. They're separate. But it was a matter of coincidence, but plenty of interest on both sides. They were very interested in one piece, and we were very interested in another. And the conversation was done simultaneously. And the Monsignor and I are sitting at the same table, and I'm working on my piece, and he says, well, before you leave, Dave, I'd like to keep talking. And that's how it came about.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Eskridge, Mr. Landis, please. This is encore.
With no respect here.
Always kept it all.
So.
The necktie.
7A is, that's the property that St. Mary's owns. It's not the parking garage itself, it's just the land.
The parking garage is an attachment. It's personal property. And it rests on the land of the church.
I think 8A is actually the parking garage. I'm interested in the sale of the O Street property. Where's that money go when it's sold?
The Advanced Land Acquisition Fund? It depends. The Land Acquisition Fund generally puts the money into departments whose money sort of originated. Sometimes it comes to the Urban Development Department, but there are inside the land acquisition, the Public Works pot, if you will, the parks pot, if you will. But in the end, the money by ordinance simply has to be spent for land acquisition. So even though it might go into the Land Acquisition Fund with a sort of a little asterisk as to which department it was, it's available for city needs. And that can be done across departments.
Other questions of Mr. Landis?
I'm staying here until I get a head shake from you, Mr. Chair.
I think, I think we're good.
Yes.
So those are our ordinances under third reading? Do we, we did both of them, didn't we? Do we need to?
Just 7A.
I did have one more question. I apologize.
Sorry, Mr. Landis?
Yes.
I released you too soon.
I'm sorry.
This is like the third encore.
There was a head shake.
That was me.
Okay. So I'm trying to, just to make, to make sure I have it right in my head. So the St. Mary's property is property with the garage on it or with the surface parking lot?
It's with the garage on it.
Okay. And so do we have, I know that there's a $600,000 price tag which indicated that it would be part of a no interest, or excuse me, tax-free bonding for acquisition of it?
We would have the option because we have some resources inside the department. We actually have been operating with a reserve. We have a couple of million dollars.
Yeah.
We could buy that with our department resources without using a bond, but there are pieces that will eventually get to a bond.
And can you tell me what the, what we're anticipating, the total bond dollars? And I recognize that this is coming out of, it's not a bond to the people and property taxes or anything like that, it's coming out of the Parking Enterprise Fund. But what the total bond will be for development of this piece of property, when it's all acquisition and development?
The acquisition, okay, would be, it would be, to get control of the land, let's say we all did a bond and we did the repairs that we'd like to use for this garage, which are there so that we can use it for a while before we have to build the big garage. That would be about $6.5 million. If you were looking at the 900-stall garage itself, absent that, Wayne, what number should I use?
27 million.
Okay, 27 million for the 900-stall garage.
Okay. And then is it okay if I, if I address these, the other, the garage questions I have before we get to those, since this is kind of tied in, even though it's not?
Sure, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. So what I, one of the things that was in this agreement and the other one, which is why I wanted to address them together, is that there are folks that are already contracted to have certain parking spaces. And we don't have a count, and the attachments had blacked-out numbers? Well, I guess we did have, in parentheses, we had some counts at some point. So can you tell me how many is one of the things I'm interested in? And then for displacement, I think you had mentioned that there would be transportation for folks that might be displaced during construction or renovation. be transportation for folks that might be displaced during construction or renovation. And how long you anticipate that will take?
A garage construction of this complexity could be two years.
Okay. Idea of how much that will cost to do that transport?
No, we would use Startran probably for, and I don't mean a city bus necessarily, but a shuttle that would be operated by them. I don't have a cost for the shuttle. It's just, that's the way that you keep your customers. You serve the customers, you know, and so we would intend to serve the customers.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for indulging me, counsel.
Thank you.
So, one more time. Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Landis for seven A? Thank you. And so, we're ready to move to seven B?
We're, we're ready to vote on seven.
Okay, I'm ready to vote then. If you guys are ready to vote. Seven A and B?
No, just seven A.
Okay. Well, I don't remember who the motion was, but if anyone has any conversation, let's just call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Seven B is the purchase agreement with Joseph Institute for the sale of city-owned property at twenty-one forty-three O Street, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Raybold and second by Eskridge. Discussion. This is the building with the fish in it, right? Seeing no discussion, would you call the roll?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carry, five to two. Five to zero.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Resolutions for action only. Item eight A is the purchase agreement between the city and American Nebraska Limited Partnership for the M Street parking garage at thirteen eighteen M Street, and including the assumption of the lease obligations for the underlying real property, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Raybold and a second by Eskridge. Discussion. Councilman Lamb.
I have, I guess I have a question, maybe for law or David Landis, I'm not sure.
Everybody come up, just.
Come on up, guy. So.
Start with Chris, or you want, I just throw the question out there.
Sure. And then, so my question is, now that we have passed seven A, are we now the lease owners?
Chris Connolly, Chief Assistant City Attorney. Well, of course, we haven't done, we haven't closed yet.
Okay.
But we will, we will be the owners of that underlying real estate underneath that parking garage at thirteen eighteen M Street.
Okay. And so we will have an obligation to ourselves?
As, as it reads.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
I think that answers.
But we will be leasing it. We step into the place of Saint Mary's.
Well, okay, now we haven't, yeah, now we, we haven't done the ANLP agreement yet. So if that is approved, then yes, we would have a lease with ourselves essentially.
But we'll, we'll have consolidated ownership. We'll own the land and the personal property. That has not happened up until now. The land was owned by the church, the personal property, the garage was owned by the Sharp Building folks.
Gotcha.
And then some surface parking. When we're done with both acts, we'll control the garage and the land on that block but for the Sharp Building. So we'll have consolidated ownership.
Okay. And but we still have to honor the parking spaces that were reserved by the previous garage or leaseholder?
We would do that anyway.
Okay.
The reason is.
I just wanted to clarify our position.
Yes, you're right.
I'm operating in flowcharts in my mind right now.
So, but as a flowchart, that's right. Those, now, when you take over, those leases are between Parkers and the Sharp Building, not the lease for the land under the garage. But we will honor those because when you take over a buy this, you honor the existing rights, like a lease, or you have to pay off the lease to get out of it. I own some property in Crete, Nebraska. I have some leases with people there. They have cabins. If I were to sell that property, the buyer of that property would have to continue to let those leases run their term. We're in the same situation here. And that is for the Parkers. We will honor their leases.
And there were specific negotiations that are incorporated in the agreement about what to happen prior to construction, during construction, and after construction of the new garage. Councilman Eskridge?
And the same thing goes for the United Way and if there are other renters in the property, it's part of the garage on, below?
Correct. Yes. That's, that's all, that's all part of the ANLP agreement, not necessarily the agreement with Saint Mary's.
Okay. Yeah. And that, that's a piece of it that really interests me in terms of the whole, the whole development, I guess, in terms of, we're looking at the parking garage, that's the main reason we're doing this, but as, as part of it, when that old garage goes away, then, then we were left with a, kind of a prime piece of, of corner property at the southwest corner there on Thirteenth Street that then is able to be developed for whatever purpose.
I've already had two developers who have called me up to say, you know, after you build the garage?
Call me.
Could we talk about that piece of property?
Yeah. Thank you. Other questions for these two testifiers? Councilman Lamb?
One more. I want to differentiate that eight A, which is eighteen R one forty-nine, this is actually the garage. Eight B is the lease option.
Yes, eight B is, is the assignment of the lease from Ralph Edwards Productions. That's correct. And we are actually purchasing the lease under eight A.
Okay. And so, under this, the lease option, does, is it automatically tied into eight A? Or could you purchase the lease option absent passing eight A?
Theoretically, you could, but practically speaking, that would create a lot of problems.
Well, I mean, you'd have an option, but you wouldn't necessarily have the building, right?
Well, the, the option goes to the surface lots.
Yeah. Eight, eight B is the surface lot alone.
Okay.
So if we, so if we bought, if we bought the underlying ground and we bought the lease to the, to the garage but didn't have rights to the surface lots, that would cause issues for us.
Okay.
In terms of being able to complete.
But you could have the surface lot and then become the landlord for whoever had the structure.
I think we're confusing.
If, well, if we, you're talking about if we didn't, if you did not approve the, the exercise or the assignment of the.
Right. If you, well, if you, if you, if you exercised and, and became owners of the underlying property but didn't buy the structure, you would be landlords for whoever had the structure.
On thirteen eighteen M Street?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Eight B is just a surface lot with no structure on it.
Gotcha.
If we did, if the lease for the garage was, okay, on the, if we owned the land, there is a thirty-three-year lease for the garage.
Okay. I guess what I, what I'm really wanting, I understand that that's the surface lot, okay?
No, it's not. No, it's, it's the other way around. Oh, sorry.
Eight B is the surface lot?
Excuse me. Eight B is the surface lot. I thought you were talking about eight A.
Okay. Okay. That's okay. So, and that has, that's the option on it. What I'm wondering is, do you have to pass, do we have to, as part of that contract, is it required that we do what we're proposing to do in eight A?
Technically, no, but the parties are related. Our, Ralph Edwards Productions.
I understand.
ANLP are basically the same parties.
I understand. I just don't, I, I'm not in favor of eight A, but I am willing to pass eight B. And I'm wanting to make sure that there's nothing in the contract or the agreement in eight B that automatically requires us to do eight A.
We did, there are not contingencies built in for the other one. There are expectations.
Okay.
But it didn't, it does not read that you can't pass one without passing the other.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions of these testifiers before they step away from the call?
If I could mention one other thing with regard to both eight A and eight B, there's a, a motion to substitute that I believe has been submitted because we're changing this to an ordinance form as opposed to a resolution. So just, just, I want to remind the Chair about that.
I have not seen that.
I'm glad you brought that up. It's actually online linked, I think. But, but my question was, the dates in there still read August. So, and they weren't dated. The documents we have that were substitutes aren't dated.
I think that's when they were.
Motion to amend, yes.
And I think that's because when we, we submitted these, I think, several weeks ago. So that's what we were looking at and then things got moved to today.
So are there any changes that we need to make up here before we pass it?
Other than the motion to amend to, to change the format, really, to ordinance as opposed to resolution, that's what those motions to amend are about.
Councilman Eskridge?
Yeah, I just want to kind of follow up with Councilwoman Lamb's thoughts here. If, if we were not to approve eight A, then we, we don't have control of that parking garage. And, and so presumably it sits there as is for thirty-plus years. No new development on the southwest corner of Thirteenth and M. We can't develop the parking garage, a new parking garage, as, as efficiently and with as many stalls as, as we would want to do. It, it kind of ties our hands, in a sense, I think.
It does in this, I think there's also a practical sense. This has been negotiated as a totality. As a seller, if we pick between, as a buyer, if we pick between the pieces, the seller doesn't see it the same way. We, we're agreeing to our half the contract, they have to agree to theirs. I think they would regard the passage of one but not the other as not the deal that they had said yes to. And both parties, I think both parts of the deal would fail. I just, I mean, they have, they have the same option that we do to put the signatures on this once we have the authority to do that. But my prediction would be that they would say, that's not the deal. So we're not bound by any of it.
Councilman?
With regard to the updated substitute resolution that has new and improved dates and the ordinance language, do you have copies of that for us to look at if it's not online? Because we don't get hard copies anymore.
Online.
Is it online? I thought, I thought Councilman Lamb thought it was not.
No, it should all be online because we've had these for weeks now.
They're all online.
Okay. So, so we're up to date online?
Except they just have the, they still have the, they don't have dates filled in as I read them, the attachments.
We fill in the dates later.
Do we want to clarify for the record what those dates are, just so that we're clear?
I'm sorry, which date, which dates are we talking about?
I don't know.
Item eight A, they just have the dates filled in on this day in August two thousand eighteen, the effective date. So they don't have the effective dates and that you can, that can be, that's all. That's all I was just noticing.
On the contract document.
Yeah, the agreement document itself. I'm looking at the, I believe it's the, the motion to amend, let's see.
The purchase agreement.
Okay. So this is the attachment, yeah, that I'm looking at?
All of the attachments. We'll fill in those.
Yeah. Attachment A, parking garage lease purchase. Under motion to amend number one, there's an ordinance to replace and an attachment A. Those, those are the latest working documents. Is that?
Yes, that's correct. And I'm, and just to clarify, go back to this question of the contingency. I've just been looking at the documents while, while this discussion was going on. As a contingent, as a condition precedent to closing, it does, it does talk about how the other agreement needs to be completed. Doesn't say the word contingency, that's true. But it does say that, that, for example, on the parking garage agreement, one of the conditions precedent to closing is that seller, which would be ANLP or RAP, shall have furnished the city with evidence of Ralph Edwards Productions exercise of its option to, to purchase. So the, these are all things that are pushing these two agreements together. Okay? And so, so while there's not the same kind of technical language that you might see in an agreement where it says, this agreement is contingent upon this agreement being approved. It, it, it would allow, if we had one approved and the other one not approved, it would allow us to get out. But that's not what we want to do. And so it's a condition precedent to closing, if that helps.
Right. So, but, but that obligates them to make sure that they have the, that they haven't forfeited the option for our protection.
That is correct.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's also evidence of how we're trying to tie these together.
Any other comments, discussions? Thank you. Harry, yes, Councilman?
I think that someone needs to introduce probably the.
Right. I'm, I don't know if this is.
Motion to amend.
I, I move motion to amend number one, which basically to redesignate the bill from a resolution to an ordinance and substitute the updated agreement.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Raybold and a second by Councilwoman Eskridge. Discussion of the substitute amendment?
Just want to be clear again, because I, are we, are we okay with the dates? Madam Clerk, are you feeling comfortable with what's being, how this is being done?
We do it all the time.
Okay.
Other questions, comments of this, a motion to amend, which substitutes? Councilwoman Lamb?
Yeah, I'll just say that although I'm not going to support the underlying action, I am going to support the substitute to amend for the updated information.
I understand. So let's call the roll on the substitution.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Now, we're voting on the ordinance?
Now, we're voting.
We now have an ordinance, correct?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. So I am really concerned by the things that we've heard over the last several weeks about the, the, the lack of really a lot of net parking. I mean, I recognize and we've been talking a lot about needing the parking downtown. And then there's some conversation about, well, if we don't get it, then it's going to continue to fall into disrepair. But we're paying. I mean, we're being asked to pay for this. And this has an owner now. If they're not going to keep it in repair, then they're not going to be able to sell it at some point in the future. And, and I am concerned with the thirty-eight million dollar price tag, or twenty million, or whatever the figure is going to eventually be cumulatively. So I'm not going to support this particular purchase. I, I am going to support the following one, because I think it makes a lot more sense to spend money building from the ground up where we have just surface and now we'll have, have several. We could build that up and make a garage ourselves and, and actually have a greater net gain. So that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other comments? Councilman Eskridge?
Yes, thank you. It, it's true that there is parking on this, much of this land now. However, it's terribly inefficient parking and it's not utilized. It's not utilized evenings at all. Much of it sits empty during the day. We can go much higher. We can have much more density for parking. Plus, we have the opportunity to develop important land on Thirteenth Street, which will, we will sell and, and get money back for, because we have good parking there. So I, I think this is, while it, it is expensive, parking is expensive, it's a, it's a very important thing for this part of downtown.
Other comments from the council?
So clarification question.
I would appreciate that, yes.
David Landis, please. Can you come up?
I'm a little confused. We do, I'm sorry, we do have a motion already, don't we? Went back to the, went back to the original motion?
We approve the amendments, but now we're facing the, the main item.
Okay. So we're good. Thank you.
And there was a motion and a second.
I just wanted to clarify about the condition of the building. I thought the, the parking garage that had the substandard conditions was across N Street, not this particular garage.
There's, there's a difference, substantial difference in both cases, and as, as is common with most privately owned garages, since they don't make money, they're not particularly well-maintained. So there's a big discrepancy. The other one that we've been talking about, and not today, has significant issues on maintenance. There is a, there's a, the engineering report says that the horizontal structure is strong, but the vertical is not and needs very serious attention. Things that you would do to improve this, and I was doing it my math, we would be able to do that for three hundred thousand dollars of some concrete work and some paint and the like. So this is not a garage that is in the same condition as the one that we were talking about across the street.
Thank you.
You're right to draw this, the distinction.
Other questions or points of clarification? So we have a motion and a second, and I think we're ready to call the roll.
This is the main motion.
Pardon?
This is the main motion.
The main motion. Thank you.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, four to one. Item eight B then is the approval of an assignment agreement between the city and Ralph Edwards Productions, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Raybold, second by Eskridge.
And similarly, we have a motion to amend number one.
Would you like to just address that now?
Yes.
I like a motion to, accept a motion to amend?
This is to adopt a substitute agreement as well.
I move a motion to amend number one, and it is to redesignate the bill from a resolution to an ordinance and substitute the updated agreement for this one.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Raybold, second by Councilman Eskridge for the substitute resolution to ordinance. Discussion of the motion to amend.
And a substitute updated agreement for this one, too.
Like she said. Discussion, Councilwoman Lam?
I just want to ask a question to verify the purchase price on this under the substitute agreement.
Mr. Landis, would you yield for a question?
I like seeing it like that, it's kind of like the. I'm confused by the numbering, I can tell you the pieces. For the option to buy the surface lots, it's 1 million, for the garage, it's 4.5.
So, I'm sorry, this, this, I'm talking about this, I'm sorry, and I just, I wasn't able to pull it up, that's why I asked. So when we're looking at eight B, we're looking at the option, and, which is on the surface lot property, is that correct?
To exercise the options of $1 million.
Okay, is there any other purchase involved in this particular transaction?
It's technically a $1 purchase, because the bigger bulk of the money really is going into buying the lease on the, the parking garage itself. And, and so rather than trying to negotiate exact dollar amounts on each, it was called $1 to buy this option, knowing that we're still, at some point at closing, we will have to pay $1 million to the bank to actually get ownership of the real estate.
To fully exercise the option, which I think is a deal.
I agree with you. Other questions or comments? This is on our motion to amend. Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Now let's return to our new ordinance. Discussion? Hearing none, would you call the roll?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Resolutions on first reading are items nine A through F. We have no ordinances on first reading. Pending list date certain are items 11A, that will come off for next week. Our regular pending list are items 12A through C.
And we're now at the public comment portion of our agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council?
Today is not an open mic.
Today's not an open mic?
Nope, next week.
Oh, because we didn't have a first meeting.
This is the second Monday, but not the first, but the second meeting.
Correct.
Alrighty then, I got that wrong. Is there any other business before the city council? I will entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second?
Don't all say it at once.
Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.